Trustee Una Clark is absent and excused and the meeting will be chaired by trustee and vice chairperson of the board Sandra Wilken. You present, okay? Trustee Michael Arvenides.
Present.
Trustee Myra Lynars Garcia.
Present.
Hugo Fernandez.
Present.
Victoria Chevalier, the faculty alternate is not joining us today. I don't see her, okay? Giovanni Baccon, the student rep, I don't see, but I think that Lynn and Jacon, the student alternate, has joined us.
Lenine Jacob, yes, thank you.
Great, thanks Lenine. This public meeting of the City University Board Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs is now called to order pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under the Open Meetings Law. This meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available on the CUNY Board of Trustees' website as well as live on the CUNY TV channels, sorry, on a Board of Trustees' website. A copy of the calendar Agenda of Items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees' website. Additional items may be added during the meeting and as a reminder, please mute so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I will now take roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Vice Chancellor Denise Maybank.
Present.
I think we're joined today Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace.
Present.
The President Jennifer Rab is the COPS liaison. Don't see her yet. The Deputy to the Vice Chancellor Ian James.
Present.
Great, and we have several students joining us today. Amber Watts from Baruch College.
Present.
Idai Sulemanova, Kingsborough Community College. I hopefully pronounced that okay?
Yes, you did. Thank you. Present.
Great. Nishoa Mullings. Likewise, if I got that right?
No, it's Nishoya.
Nishoya, got it. Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Omar Salim.
Present.
Terrific, from BMCC. And I see that we are now just joined by President Rab is now present. So it's all you Sandra. And you're muted.
Thank you, Gail. Item one, I now call on Vice Chancellor Denise Mayback to give her report.
Thank you, Trustee Wilkins, and good evening. We are knocking at the door of May, the month that causes our eyes to be fixed upon accomplishments, commencements, and future directions. Commencements are beginnings, startups and originations, and they are the occurrences that breathe hope into our daily existence. And so as we come to this space, I hope that you are looking forward to all there is. I trust that those of you who knew of a break and could get a break did so. Those of us who didn't realize it was break time just kept doing what we do, and it's all good. So I begin my report today with the announcement that the university's student senate on Sunday elected a chairperson and student trustee. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Salamatu Duhm Boya to the role of student trustee. She will, I'm certain, impress you all and be an outstanding leader. I share with you today a mental health services update. We are partnering with a company providing virtual peer-to-peer mental health and wellbeing support for students. TogetherAll is an online community offering students a safe and anonymous place to express their thoughts, concerns, and triumphs. This community is clinically monitored moderated, I'm sorry, by mental health professionals. Resources are free to students and available 24/7 every day of the year. Students can draw strength and insight from peers who have real lived experiences and they can ease, they can also access a range of self-directed clinically validated tools for self-assessment and for tracking their progress. There are courses offering techniques to manage and promote mental health and wellbeing. TogetherAll integrates with CUNY's existing campus counseling services and after our resources. So we are expanding the ways in which students, student wellbeing is addressed across the university. Our committee is that of Student Affairs and Special Programs, and today we want to highlight two of our special programs. So in good CUNY fashion, I introduce them through their acronyms, CD and SEEK. These programs come under the leadership of University Dean Sunday Coward and the team in the Office of Special Programs. The College Discovery Program, CD, founded in 1964, is offered at our community colleges. While the Percy E. Sutton Search for Education, Elevation, and Knowledge, SEEK, founded in 1965, is that Higher Education Opportunity Program that is offered at our senior and comprehensive colleges. CD and SEEK were established to provide comprehensive academic, financial, and social supports to assist capable students who otherwise might not be able to attend college due to their educational and financial circumstances. The programs are funded by the state of New York. I acknowledge that the state legislature approved a 13% increase in the budget for both CD and SEEK just a couple of weekends ago, and for that, we are sincerely grateful as it means greater opportunity for more students across our region. Prospective students must indicate that they wish to be considered for SEEK and CD on their CUNY admissions applications, and in general, these opportunities are made available to entering freshmen. Also, there are opportunities to transfer between the campuses to participate in these support programs. There were over 26,000 applications forwarded from admission to campuses for consideration with approximately 3,500 seats available for the current year. So no doubt, it's competitive, it's desired, and we want to make certain that it continues to be all that we need it to be. Students admitted to CD and SEEK will receive extensive support services, including tutoring and counseling when needed, and they become a part of a community that helps them to navigate all that college is, all that it offers, and to ensure their success. As I talked, as I mentioned at the beginning and talked about commencement, SEEK and CD will have a graduation recognition on Friday, May 6. The Special Programs Office will have a virtual event to acknowledge the graduates from summer 2021, fall 2021, winter 2022, and spring 2022. We plan to honor the accomplishments of about 2,050 graduates at that time. The City University of New York Student Affairs and Office of Special Programs will welcome the incoming fall 2020 and transfer students accepted into CD and SEEK through a program at Queens College on Tuesday, July 12, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Incoming SEEK and CD students will learn more about program offerings, university-wide resources, and academic services while enjoying food, fun, and fellowship. The CD and Seek Welcome Day 2022 will be one of several community building and retention-based events Special Programs will host this academic year. Today, we have the benefit of the voices of students from our CD and Seek programs. I can't tell you all it means to those given this opportunity, so after our action items, I'm going to let them tell it, and they won't be able to tell it all because they each only have two minutes. So with that, Chairperson Wilken, I conclude my report.
Well, thank you, Vice Chancellor Mayback. You had a very informative report. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, I will announce the resolutions and ask for the members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. You are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record. Thank you. We will now take up the following items for approval. Action item. I move the approval of action item 2A, the minutes of the January 10 and February 28, 2022 meetings. Do I have a second?
Mayra Lynars Garcia, second?
Any discussion? We will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. The item is approved. Item 2B, the Policy Calendar. 2B1 is a resolution to approve the 2022 Jonas Esal scholarship awards. I now call on Deputy to the Vice Chancellor Ian James to provide further background on this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilkins. This year, eight outstanding CUNY undergraduate STEM students have been selected to receive the university's most precious scholarship, the Jonas Esal Award, an annual scholarship granted to those students accepted into medical school or graduate programs in biomedical sciences. These students have demonstrated song character, outstanding scholarship, and the promise of significant contribution to medicine and medical research. The 2022 Jonas Esal Scholars hail from Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College and Queens College, CD College of New York and Baruch College. In addition, the scholars were accepted into medical schools at University of Rochester, Albert Einstein School of Medicine, New York University School of Medicine, New York Institute of Technology College of Osteopathic Medicine, Weill Cornell University, Rockefeller University, Icahn School of Medicine at Monson High, and SUNY Downstate Medical School. Madam Vice Chair, I proudly recommend these outstanding students for the Esal Awards to the Committee for Approval.
Thank you, Ian. I move to the approval of policy item 11B1. Do I have a second?
Arvenides, second proudly.
Any further discussion? We will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Item is approved. With no more action items on the policy calendar, we will move to the information item on the agenda, and that is 3A. We will now hear reflections from students from the Search for Education, Elevation, and Knowledge and College of Discovery Programs. And I invite Vice Chancellor Mayback and to introduce our terrific CUNY students.
Thank you again, Trustee Wilken. I am honored to introduce four students representing CD and Seek programs this evening. I will tell you that Jonas Esal is credited with a quote that says, "The reward for work well done is the opportunity to do more." And so today, you four get to do more. So I know some of them are nervous, but it's all good. You're with friends, so please just tell it as you know it, but tell it in two minutes. So we're going to start with our SEEK representatives, and I'm going to first introduce Amber Watts from Baruch College, and she is representing the SEEK program there. And then Nishoya, I hope I did that right, Mullings, from York College's SEEK program. And they will be followed by those representing the CD or College Discovery programs. And first, there will be Idai Sulemanova, I think I got that one right, from Kingsborough Community College, and Omar Salim from Borough of Manhattan Community College. So that is the order in which you will go, offer your two minutes, and the next person will begin immediately following. So Amber.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Maybanks, and thank you to the Board of Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. My name is Amber Watts, and I'm currently a junior at Baruch College, majoring in finance with a minor in communication studies. Being a part of the SEEK program has opened tremendous doors for me as a Black woman on the rise to success. I've had the opportunity to join the National Association of Black Accountants, NABUP, via the Baruch chapter for the past three years, currently serving as their marketing director and striving to be the next chapter president. Furthermore, my advisors recommended that I join the Financial Women's Association on campus to highlight the importance of women in corporate America. I am proud to say I'm a product of the CD and Seek initiative because the staff take the time to encourage and motivate students to be the best version of themselves. SEEK and the amazing staff were able to grant me the opportunity to receive an internship at one of the big four companies, KPMG, for the past two years to help prepare me for the job market and my future career goals. Besides providing financial assistance to my tuition at CUNY, SEEK has provided academic, emotional, and mental support. Anytime that I felt that I was struggling in class for a particular subject, I could always ask for a tutor for any subject of my choosing, or if I just wanted to have a sit-down conversation about where I am personally or professionally within my life. We are all aware of the challenges that COVID-19, nevertheless, having that outlet to express how you feel and be vulnerable showing the level of comfort we receive from this community, whether virtually or in person. I've learned within the SEEK program that it's okay to be frustrated, ask for help, and ask questions because we always would have someone there to support us through any crisis, and we must be willing to accept the support and advice. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address all of you, and have a good evening.
Thank you for your kind words, Vice Chancellor Mayback. Good evening, honorable members of the CUNY Board of Trustees, Chancellor Rodriguez, staff, faculty, students, and friends. Once again, my name is Nishoya Mullings. I am a proud student of your college and enrolled in the SEEK program, majoring in health science. I am one of over 5,000 students who attends your college, and together, we are all one York. I am here today to give a special thank you to our hardworking and dedicated staff at York, under the leadership of our college president, Dr. Berenice Johnson Ames, who works tirelessly to support and serve the students of our college. I reside in Northeast Bronx, and I live, I fell in love with your college on my first two-hour ride to visit the campus. Yes, I travel two hours every day there, and I love it there. The staff were really polite, and they helped me to navigate the campus effortlessly on my first visit. The SEEK program was a huge help in my transition from high school to college. I learned how to deal with all the struggles and hardship that may come during my new journey as a freshman and onwards. The SEEK counselors do a great job in helping us every step of the way, and for that, I am truly grateful. As a result of the SEEK program, I was able to do well academically through free tutoring, became the president of the York College Pre-Med Club, and the recording secretary of the Student Government Association. I am grateful for all the accomplishments and will hold them near and dear to my heart. Thank you, SEEK, York, and CUNY for all your help to make me a better student leader and for offering me an opportunity at a better life for me and my family. Go Cardinals! Thank you!
Thank you for that introduction, Vice Chancellor Mayback. Good evening, committee members, students, faculty, and staff. My name is Idai Sulemanova, and I'm proud to be a part of College Discovery at Kingsborough Community College. I'm also happy to share that I will also be participating in our 57th commencement because I will be graduating this semester with my associate's degree in liberal arts, and I'm looking forward to pursue my education in social work at a senior college in John Jay. And I just wanted to begin by saying that I have the utmost gratitude for being able to be in College Discovery in my educational pursuits for these past few years, and being at Kingsborough Community College and part of College Discovery has allowed me to flourish because of the wonderful support systems available to students like me. And the College Discovery Program staff, along with my wonderful advisor Carl Alexandri, has guided me through a lot of the challenges that I needed to overcome when transitioning from high school to college. I've also had amazing tutors. Shout out to Ashley Menjivar in College Discovery at Kingsborough, who never denied me any help. During the peaks of the pandemic, advisors continued to support us and check on our progress and hardships with online learning. And with the help of my advisors, I was also able to find my true passions and what steps I should take next, and formed beautiful relationships with my peers. They have been excellent role models and even helped me to build the confidence to reach out to other students to help wherever I could. And once we returned in person, I was right back at the College Discovery office at Kingsborough. I'm so thankful to have their continued support as I continue my education. As I'm transferring to a senior college, and I owe a lot of what I know and the guidance that I have, I was fortunate enough to have at College Discovery further on. And if you have not had the opportunity to visit Kingsborough Community College, it would be my honor to give you a personal tour of my beautiful campus on the beach. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Mayback, for our introductions. Starting out, I just want to thank the Board of Trustees Committee for giving me the honor to speak with all of you today. My name is Omar Salim. I'm a second-year student at the Borough of Manhattan Community College, majoring in biology and a science major, and I'm seeking to become a veterinarian. I'm also part of the College Discovery Program at BMCC. All I could say is that it's been a difficult journey for all of us going through the biggest impacted time of our lives when COVID hit us. I was scared, I was confused, I was lost, and most of all, I was wondering if I was gonna make it through all the semesters. Was this gonna change everything, or was it gonna be the same? Online learning was the hardest thing that I had to go through, and it led from one hard day to another. But if you ever wondered how it felt or how it feels to be surrounded by positivity, love, and a feeling of second family away from home...
You just got muted. There you go.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, happens.
I'm glad about, I'm glad that I have the opportunity to represent and stand in front of all you today, because there's nothing that I can say that would be how the College Discovery Program treats their students with respect and devotion to guide us to the right paths. As you step into that room, you're comfortable smiling, comfortable being yourself around them, and even you're most comfortable to open up about your life because it's always ensured that you have a safe space that you could talk with. The CD family is always gonna be the only one program that you want to run to show your degrees to and your accomplishments at the end of your graduation, and they taught me how to show the best version of myself. And many lessons were taught to me as I entered college, and one lesson that highlights the way that I would succeed is to never put my head down, to keep it rising, to stay strong, and to fully understand that not everything has to be perfect because everything is meant to be. And however it is meant to be, that's how you handle it, and you keep on moving. And that's what I like to share with many students because stress won't get you anywhere, just positivity. And the great staff of CUNY really helps out pushing us into the right directions, and especially for College Discovery, it's me growing a family and me having the opportunity of being comfortable to come to school and talk to them and have the endless support is what I will always appreciate. And I would like to extend my most sincere appreciation to the staff here for your dedication. I think you have all taught us, and that goes for all CUNY and CD, that you have all taught us to step back on our feet and continue our journeys. You have put smiles on our faces through the hardest times of our lives, and you've showed a strength. But a very hard life experience myself stepping foot into campus again, and having all of you on my side is so inspiring, and as many students would say so also. And as I end here, I would like to say one thing more. It is no matter what we go through, we go through as a family and one of the biggest support systems. Today, we all graduate. Today, we all make you proud. Thank you so, thank you so much for choosing me to speak with all of you today, and it's been an honor.
I want to say thank you to each of you for representing your programs, representing your campuses, and representing CUNY so well. Opportunity. Opportunity is that set of circumstances that makes something possible. It is the chance that is given to have things happen. And so I leave you with this quote and recognize that the faces that you see before you this evening, the voices that you heard from our four outstanding students are the voices of those who are figuring it out, making it happen, and using their opportunities to bring it all to fruition. So I leave you with this quote from Franz Fanon that says, "Each generation must, out of relative obscurity, discover its mission, fulfill it, or betray it, and we know that it is in great hands with those who are before us." So thank you for the opportunity to share.
My goodness. I would love to start just to say how very, very proud we are of these amazing students and the support of the programs that you brought for us today, and the future is very, very bright, given what you have said. And by the way, you have alumnized on this, on the call today, and know and appreciate all that you have been through. It's indeed, it's been a very challenging time, and the future and the path that you have decided to continue on. So thank you, and it's an honor to have you be able to speak and discuss the programs that we have. Is there any other comments? Chancellor? Chancellor?
I, I want to echo your words, Madam Chair, and proud, proud alumni of CUNY. Thank you to Vice Chancellor Maybanks for the presentation and for setting the students, as always, in the most inspirational of ways. And thank you for your work and your leadership because I know that you're all very active in your campuses, doing important leadership work in, 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 in all the areas. And now that we are coming back from spring break, that it is that time of the semester where, you know, things get a little bit more complicated as we go into the, into April, into May. May the force be with all of you. And I look forward to seeing a whole bunch of As in those transcripts next time you presented this board. And many of the dreams that you share with us today of your personal and professional aspirations and dreams, that the next time there are paths crossed that you could have a big wicked smile on your face, just letting us know how you accomplish them and how you're gonna pay it forward to the next generation of great CUNY students. So thank you for ending this very long day of board meetings in the most aspirational of, of form. So thank you.
Once again, thank you, Vice Chancellor Maybach. Really appreciate all of your efforts and the programs that were, that we have pursued. Thank you.
There's a hand raised. I don't know if you see. Lennon.
Is there somebody that?
The student Lennon. Yes, sorry. Thank you so much. I was muted. I had sirens in my background, and I was trying to be mindful. Before we turn in and continue on, I just want to say, you know, as a student leader with CCSZ, I felt like I hit the lottery when I came across CCSZ because I found what many of you referenced tonight. I found respect, I found family, I found a supportive system. I found amazing advisors. So shout out to you, Raymond Perez and Charmaine Townsall. Cannot, not say that whenever I speak about them. But I wanted to say I am thankful, and it warms my heart that you are all here tonight and that you shared what your experiences have been with SEEK and CD because it's beautiful to see that there are other programs in CUNY that provide that for our students. So I want to thank the board for allowing me to be here tonight. But I also want to thank you all for coming and sharing your stories. So thank you so much.
You're muted, Sandra.
Thank you. So with no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. And do I have a second?
Arvin, any second?
All in favor? I'll assume that's an aye.
Good aye to everybody.
Thank you.